All right, Madam Chair, should I go ahead and read the preamble?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Let's welcome everyone to the Cleveland Planning Commission. I'll go ahead and read the preamble so that we're all on the same page about how this meeting will be conducted. In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting law and Section 101.021 of the Codified Ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the City Planning Department conducts its meetings according to Robert's Rules of Order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Abstentions from any votes due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting has had the opportunity to be heard, we ask that you use the raise hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raise hand feature can be found in the Participants Panel on the desktop and mobile version and activated by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the WebEx screen. For those who are call-in users, you can unmute by using star six. Thank you. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being livestreamed via YouTube. All requests to speak on a particular matter via our website and email have been considered. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comments on a particular matter.
Madam Chair, I'll call the roll.
Thank you. Michael, you're a little bit voices low. Is there any chance you can turn your volume up?
Absolutely. Hope that's better.
Yep, thank you.
Downing.
Present.
Booker. Hurry.
Present.
Craig Scott.
Present.
Paul.
Present.
Charles sent me a note that he, his computer crashed. So he's restarting and he will be on in a few minutes. He just has a computer issue. So when he gets on, I'm going to note that he is attending, just for the record.
But we do have a corner, Madam Chair.
We do have a corner. Okay, thank you. So the first item is a conditional use permit. Permanent parcel number 025-023-071 and -026. We tabled this matter, so before we hear it, I'll need a motion to remove this from the table.
I move to remove it from the table, Downing.
Second, Booker.
The motion and a second, can I have the roll, Michael?
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
McRae Scott.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
And I don't see Charles yet. Does anyone see him? Councilman's slide.
I just, my audio took a couple of minutes to connect for some reason, so I not sure.
We're just removing the first item from the table, but we'll note that you have arrived and you're here. I think on this matter, we're going to hear from staff first and then we'll hear from the applicant second. So I'm going to turn it over to the Planning Commission staff.
Thank you, this is Director Huang. As many of you know, there's been a long timeline on this case, so we're eager to provide due process for this particular hearing. We have Shannon Leonard from the zoning department who will provide the presentation. And then, as noted, the applicants will also respond. Go ahead, Shannon.
Good morning, Shannon Leonard, Chief Zoning Planner for City Planning Commission. And so, just going to preface to say that we all have different stakes and different roles in this matter. Us being here at City Planning, we're responsible for making sure that the applicants get due process and that they go through the same process as every other applicant. That is our role. So moving forward, I will give you the presentation and present all of the facts of this case and then we can go from there. So next slide, please. So this is the location of this proposal. It is at the corner near West 159th and Lorraine in the Cam's Corners neighborhood. It is on a retail corridor that is, has a pedestrian retail overlay with a underlying zoning of local retail. There are a few bars in the area. There's a Jehovah Witness Church on the northmost side of the screen. There is a takeout fish restaurant. There are a couple of retail shops, some mixed-use buildings. And then this particular property is against a multifamily residential district, which buffers a two-family residential district with a single-family and two-family homes. Next slide, please. And so the proposal here was Ms. Prashana Brown. She has been an event stylist and an event planner for many, many years. She decided she wanted to take her business to the next level. She found this place on Craigslist. It seemed like a wonderful place. It had a garage for her to store all of her event decorations. She normally travels around to different events, but she wanted to open her own space so she could start hosting her own events. And she was sent this, she found this location, it seemed like a great place. And so she picked this neighborhood specifically because she serves a diverse range of clientele. And so she wanted her clientele to feel safe. And so this was the location she chose. The landlord presented this space as a place for an event center and that she couldn't use it for any other purpose and that this space was ready for that. So as you can see on the right-hand side of the screen, those are all of her decorations that she has been using to decorate parties for many years. So this isn't just some kind of fly-by-party center. She really spent a lot of money and time in investing in this place. Next slide, please. She came to this place, she thought it was great. She upgraded the flooring. She decorated, she put in her own decorations, thinking that she could go forward with her business here. So she did sign a lease in May. She opened in June and she quickly found out from neighbors and the surrounding community that her business was not really welcomed in the neighborhood or that she could not operate her business there. So she received a violation notice last fall and then promptly put in an application to change the use. And this is not uncommon. Many of these PRO cases that come before you are applicants. They're not, they're the tenants, they're not the landlord, that come before you not realizing they've already opened their business, unfortunately, and don't have the proper occupancy permits on file. Moving forward, next slide, please. So not only does she find out that this business is not permitted in this, the underlying zoning, she's also in a pedestrian retail overlay district, which means she needs conditional uses, excuse me, conditional uses from this commission. The first conditional use she needs is a driveway across the public sidewalk. That is because in our pedestrian retail overlay districts, these are historic shopping districts where we're trying to preserve our storefronts. We are promoting walkability, et cetera. And so the driveway of the public sidewalk, you must determine if the size, shape, and layout of the subject property does not permit placement of the parking or the driveway in a more suitable location or if it has been demonstrated by the applicant that the placement of the parking, loading, or driveway in a loud location would jeopardize a continued occupancy of the subject property. In this case, this property is a landlocked property. And so the only way to reach the rear parking lot would be that driveway if we were to use that parking lot. Next slide, please. The second is this section of the code that requires any type of social space, whether it's a meeting space for sip wine, sip and paint, or whether it's small events, gatherings, et cetera. It requires an assembly permit, an A3 permit from the Department of Building and Housing. A place of assembly in a pedestrian retail overlay is defined as an institutional use in our 343.23. So for this case, she needs a conditional use for the institutional use. Next slide, please. And so for that, you will have to, I'm so sorry, my phone keeps ringing. It never rings as much, I apologize. And so for the institutional use, you have to determine if the subject building space was designed specifically for this type of use proposed or if the denial of the application would result in long-term vacancy or if the proposed use is needed in the immediate area or suitable alternative locations are unavailable. And you really only have to determine if one or more of the following is the case. Next slide, please. And so I just wanted to bring to our attention, because we're bringing all the facts to you so that you can make a good decision here, is that we have recently had several of these event centers in a pedestrian retail overlay district. And in the last two years, there have been six that have been approved by Planning Commission as well as from the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so I just want to run through these real quick. In 2020, in February, we had 5900 Detroit Avenue. They wanted to establish the use as an event center with live entertainment. They needed the conditional use as well as six variances. They needed 72 parking spaces and they were adjacent to a two-family zone. All of the conditions were granted as well as the variances and there's verbal agreements for parking on file. In May of 2020, we had a conditional use for 4700 Lorraine. They also wanted to establish the use as an event center for parties, baby showers, bridal showers, workshops, fundraisers, et cetera. They needed the conditional use for the institutional use and they needed 58 parking spaces. They were granted the conditional uses. They had a written agreement for 52 spaces with the Urban Community School. They were only permitted 99 attendees and they needed to have everybody off-site by 11:30 PM. They were in a two-family and a local retail zone. Next was 15515 Waterloo. This was to establish the use as a for-profit retail art gallery, social space for events. This was also adjacent to a two-family district. They needed a conditional use for an institutional use. They needed 51 parking spaces. Zero parking spaces were provided. They were given all of their variances as well as the conditional use. And then the last case that is most like this one is also is 532 East 185th Street. They established the use as a home share event space with open market and live entertainment. They needed the conditional use for an institutional use. They needed the variances for the use. CPC actually, in this case, asked them to reduce their parking and their variances were granted. Next slide, please. So in addition to that, it came to our realization about three days ago about what the occupancy of this space would be. So when you're talking about specifically an assembly use permit, you're permitted 15 square feet per person. This space has 1,306 square feet of usable gross floor area. Technically, this space could hold 87 people. However, when you have 50, over 50 occupants, your doors must swing in the direction of egress. So in this case, this building, the signs, the doors pull out and you had to push them in. And then exit signage is required and a second means of egress that could be accessed publicly. And then if you have over 99 or 100 folks, you need to make sure that your space is sprinkled. And then specifically to an assembly permit, if you have one unisex toilet, you're unfortunately only allowed to have 15 occupants. And this only applies for building permit for assembly permit. If this was a carryout restaurant or diner, that might not necessarily be the case. And so in this specific case, this unfortunately basically renders this type of social space pretty much very unprofitable and unlikely for her business to be successful strictly on these without making building improvements and upgrades. Next slide, please. And so before I give my zoning recommendation, I would like to acknowledge some of the roadblocks that Ms. Brown has faced. First, being her landlord who rented her space that did not have the correct occupancy permits nor legal building features that support this type of event center or assembly occupancy. The second roadblock is a difficult and sometimes non-transparent city process. The third roadblock being the community where she decided to open the business and proceeded to hinder her from operating by expressing their disdain for her or her type of business through verbal altercations with her and her patrons, as well as ensuring that she was unable to secure parking from a variety of neighboring businesses. And lastly, the fourth roadblock being that Ms. Brown has poured her life savings into attempting to take her business to the next level by investing in her own social space. And because of the lack of support and knowledge, she has had to put her business on hold and she has taken a very substantial financial and emotional hit to her business and her family. For these reasons, in conjunction with the precedent of previous cases and the knowledge that decisions made by you all have a direct effect on everyday citizens, for better or for worse, I recommend that this commission allow Ms. Brown to receive her conditional uses for the use of this property for the zoning considerations that we have discussed. If you are unable to grant her these conditional uses for a driveway over a public sidewalk or the institutional use on the zoning considerations presented, I recommend and I hope that this commission, the council, the CDC, and our departments within City Hall make the verbal commitment today on record to work with Ms. Brown to help her get out of this three-year lease, recoup some of her lost funds, and find a suitable location for her business so she may provide for herself and family immediately. Thank you.
All right, commission members, before we discuss this, I'd like to ask that either the applicant or the owner or any other individuals who'd like to speak about the matter, if they're here, just raise your hand and we'll hear that first before we open it up. Okay.
Madam Chair, we have Dean Paccas.
Okay. But please just state your name and your relationship to the project before I speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Dan Paccas. I am, I am the son of the owner of the building. My mother, who's 87 years old, you know, actually owns the building, but we worked together as a family to, you know, make this work for her. I just wanted to say that, you know, we've, our families own the property a good 30 years. And when we had purchased the building back then, the exact space that we're referencing was actually a recording studio and also a, like, concert hall. So that's what we had inherited when we purchased the building. And since then, it's been various other things like CPA firm and other things. So it's, it's, and obviously, this business has come and go, that, you know, it's morphed into different things. That particular space is a little bit difficult in renting because it's such a large square footage area. And, and, you know, obviously with us, we are limited with our parking. And that just came with the territory of buying that particular building. We're landlocked and, as was mentioned, we don't have any other options to take over any other parking spaces to supplement what we've got. There's nothing really available around us that we could personally purchase or do or, you know, unless we buy something else and tear down a building and put in a parking lot, which I don't think is an option for that area. So, you know, we're trying to make do as we can. As, as you see, you know, we, we, we're always open to renting who we can, you know, within reason and within legality. And we've never had any issues with other tenants before, meaning a community against any other tenants before. Our tenants we've had have been pretty good. You know, you get good and bad, but Pre-Ken is good. And again, I think she's got a brilliant business concept and, you know, we want her to succeed. And that's, you know, we wholeheartedly support her in whatever she does, as we do with any of our tenants. And we have a diversified list of tenants within that building, a good representation of the city of Cleveland. And we just hope that this continues. Don't have too much more than beyond that, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Go ahead.
My name is Prashana Brown. I'm actually the tenant at 15736 Lorraine. I just kind of wanted to introduce myself and give you guys just a little bit of insight on my business, least weeks events that I put together in April 2017. I started out decorating, so I have over four years of clientele and experience. I jumped out on faith with this business because I knew that I could benefit and it would be good for my business. Of course, I ran into some issues. Sorry if I'm a little emotional because just the events of what's been going on, it's really been taking me through some things, you know, like even with the community being so hard on me with judging a book's biased cover, just with not welcoming me without reason, basically. So I started this, I started decorating four years ago. I do a lot of diverse. I have actually covered maybe, I'll say, 15 events at another location that's an event space two blocks from me. So I'm used to this, you know, I know this area. I thought that it would be a good area with me considering this space because just the diversity of my clientele and the people that I would like to service, I thought that it was a good area. However, I was stopped due to unfortunate circumstances with the community being so mean to me, not giving me a chance, you know, city councilman, just nobody not really giving me a chance, considering just getting to know the business. Nobody tried to get to know the business. And then with the unfortunate circumstances of the building of what's going on, it's just, basically, it's just been taking me through some things. So I just hope today that we can come up with a good resolution to where I can succeed because I really feel like this space, I would actually, if things wouldn't have happened how they happen during this time this year, the success would be, the business would be very successful in the area. I have actually had to give back and refund clients because I did book out on this space for this following year, but I had to reimburse people, so I took the financially hurt on that. I have nothing to move forward with, anything. So I just wanted to share that to, you know, for you guys to kind of like understand where I am with it. It's just been really hard and kind of like, I feel a little, kind of unfair in some ways with the community-wise. But it's just, it's just been really hard, you know? They just been making it really hard for me and this was a good thing, you know? Like, this was a good thing for my business. And it has just taken a complete turn to where it's affecting me in negative ways. And so I just want to come up with a resolution today so that I can move forward and, you know, the business could succeed because it can and it will. So I just wanted to share that so you guys could, you know, kind of like understand just where I am with it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Joyce?
Thank you. Thank you all. I appreciate the comments. As you can see, it's a very complicated case of many layers. You know, there's this cycle of either, you know, information that was either not known or unclear and then actions taking on that information and then perceptions or feelings or, you know, results that came from that and it sort of continued in the cycle where we're trying to make decisions based off of information that was unclear. So for example, you know, I wonder if Ms. Brown had known that there was one bathroom and that limited the maximum occupancy to 15 people? If, if that would have been something for consideration, given that the lease was for an event space? And so that, that, you know, tells me that there are specific issues with city process. That would not have been known until an official building inspection after the conditional use permit and after the variance. And so as Shannon shared, we found this out about three days ago. And so that is definitely information that is new for consideration for this use. As, as there may be conflicting, conflicting facts, I'm sorry, not conflicting facts, but with the lease being for an event space and for there only being one bathroom, I do believe that this would provide economic hardship on Ms. Brown and has provided economic hardship on Ms. Brown. So I stand by Shannon's, you know, recommendations based on what Ms. Brown intends for the space, which is small gatherings, as well as a community meeting space. So again, it's that the conditional use is provided and Ms. Brown is able to go forward with, you know, other improvements or that if the body decides not that we would commit, including myself at the city, to assisting her to find a new space.
Thank you. I'm going to open up to the commission for questions. I have one technical question and I'm not sure if this goes to you, Joyce, or you, Ms. Brown, or the owner. But if I heard the whole presentation correctly, is one of the issues that Ms. Brown was not properly informed by the owner of the requirements of this space and also the improvements that would be required are actually the responsibility of the owner, not her, and she was not aware of them? And they are, I guess you're saying, extremely expensive in order to be compliant? Is that correct?
Both information from the, from the whole city process around use permit as well as interaction between landlord and tenant on who is doing what and what is necessary.
Okay.
Shannon, Shannon, did you want to chime in on that, too?
Yeah, so for this specific case, the, the lease was signed, the, under the lease, it states that this can only be a party event center. I don't know, I presume at this point that the landlord maybe was not aware that in for an event space, you need to have two bathrooms. You need to have your doors going the correct direction and you need exit signage. And so to be able to use this space from a building and housing perspective with a building permit, once we get past the zoning, to use this space for the, to be a successful business, she would need an additional bathroom and her doors to be fixed and exit signage to be placed on there. And so that can be cost prohibitive if the landlord or the applicant, for the applicant specifically, it's definitely cost prohibitive. And so that's really a building and housing and several matter before you today is simply zoning, conditional use issues. Obviously, this is complicated completely all around, so.
Okay, commission members, I'm going to ask for any questions or comments.
I'm happy to jump in really since this is obviously something that's been on my radar for a while. And just to kind of start with those, those larger issues, just kind of in no particular order. I do feel really bad for Ms. Brown. I think that, you know, she's gotten into this lease situation and I don't think it's reasonable that we expect every small business owner to have a hyper-awareness of every minute city regulation, even as we work to make our processes more predictable and more efficient. Just bluntly, I have less sympathy for the property owner. A couple of weeks before this lease was inked, the Development Corporation actually met with the property owner, said, "As you're looking to rent out space, make sure you call us and we can help you do zoning analysis or determine what permits there are." So the idea that, one, the idea that the property owner, you know, had, was coming into this completely green, I guess I just don't believe. But also, you know, I do think it is the obligation of property owners around our city to be doing their due diligence and that there are rules and regulations and we can't just allow, you know, ignorance of the laws, no excuse. Allow, you know, ignorance of the laws, no excuse, and, and I think that that's a situation here and now what we have is a. A tenant who is under a lease that mandates a use that, you know, uh, she can't currently operate. As, uh, to, to, to Ms. Leonard's point about, uh, city assistance, I know my office, uh, West Park cams. And, uh, the Department of Economic Development have already been, you know, in communication with Ms. Brown, asking her, uh, you know, uh. What her requirements are for the space that we can, uh, you know, assist with site searches, both, you know. Within this specific neighborhood as well as, you know, other areas nearby, um, just to get a sense of what's available and, and, and what works. With the, um, with the proposed business use. And, and, and I, I commit to that moving forward, you know, I've, I've also, um, you know, spoken with some contacts at, at legal aid. You know, should Ms. Brown, uh, need to, uh, consult with someone about the validity of the lease. You know, and, and just about, about, you know, as the local councilman, the, uh, outreach that I've gotten. Uh, about the use and, and the, um, the, uh, opposition to the use has been primarily about, uh, parking. And, uh, events ending later in the evening. And I think so, when you have an assembly use, unlike a small business where there's gonna be, uh, turnover, a parking, and people coming and going. An assembly use is obviously gonna assemble people all at one point and then people are going to, uh, kind of. Leave within a short period of time, so it's, it's, it's more about traffic and noise in that extent and it's almost. Arguably an unavoidable, uh, after effect of, of just this type of use, uh, whatever it is. And, and also a discomfort with knowing that, you know, not necessarily in this process, but the boarding, or zoning appeals process, if the variance is granted. That variance follows the property and, and, you know, should, uh, this, if, if, if this. Operator were to vacate the space and a new one were to come in, uh, that there, there would not be, uh, vetting and an assurance that, that future. Uh, operator would be a, a good player. And then just with the parking, there are, uh, four moderately sized apartment buildings right around the corner that rely on the street parking, so. And that they don't, don't have dedicated lots for, or spots for each apartment, so, uh, there is already a, a demand for on-street parking. Immediately in the area, um, and then just, uh. Madam Chair, just narrowing it down to what's specifically before us today. I'll say, and, and, uh, to, uh, Director Wong, I think that this is something we need to look at, that the requirement for the driveway over a side block. I'll, I'll say is a sort of a, a, a silly requirement, it's especially if it's an existing condition. I understand the intent for new construction, but, um. I, I, I think that it would be valuable time for us to kinda tighten up that language and, and not be wasted. Uh, this commission's time with existing conditions, but as, as for the assembly permit, uh, you know, that's the sticking point. Uh, as, as it was noted, uh, the space is, uh, in a local retail district, you know, local retail is intended to serve the immediate area. Uh, there's not sufficient parking, no ability to get, uh, you know, parking agreement within the immediate area for off-street parking. You know, the, the, the space requires, uh, retrofitting, uh, and, and then just, I don't. Believe the owner has sufficiently demonstrated a, a, a long-term burden. If, if this were not an event space, that, that although the space was vacant for some time. Uh, the moment it became advertised, it was, uh, uh, easily rented quickly, so I, I, I think that. For those reasons, um, my position is, is to, uh, deny these two conditions. And, and to continue to work with Ms. Brown to help her find, uh, a suitable location.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we do have Mr. Pakas with his hands raised again, and we have Ms. Brown with her hand raised again.
Okay, thank you, go ahead, um. Uh, let's go to Ms. Brown first.
Um, I just wanted to touch bases on some of the things that Mr. Slyf has said. Just to cover because I think that they're important, um, regarding. Them reaching out to me, trying to help find a space, um, I have only. It has only been brought to my attention two days ago, so I think that that is kinda. Time sensitive, considering that we have been going along with this for five months and I have honestly been trying to get in touch with Mr. Slyf. To talk to him personally for at least about four months and I have had no contact with him, only with Ben Campbell. Who is someone over in neighborhood development who has tried to help me, but he had to stand back. When Mr. Slyf couldn't. Couldn't support the business. Also with regard in the parking, um, I think that that matters. Mr. Slyf and maybe other businesses has made it hard for me to obtain. A parking agreement because they have got together on several occasions. To make it hard to get everybody on a bandwagon for unforeseen reasons, unfair reasons, I'm not sure what it is. Because I have asked to be a part of community meetings before back in June and July prior to meeting Ben Campbell so that. I can introduce myself to the community. So I just thought that that was kinda important to state that considering what Mr. Slyf was saying about the agreement because I have reached. Out to several businesses over there and regarding the parking and talking to a couple of the businesses and business owners. It has been brought to my attention that everyone has been brought to. Came together to be on the same team, no matter, you know, how they felt about it because, like I said, Seven Seas did had a. Verbal agreement with me that I would be able to use this parking. He stated that I could, he could do it verbally, um, but then after the parking issue came up and I started reaching out to several businesses. This is, and I was just getting, um, uncomfortable energy from them, unwelcoming energy from the businesses and I wasn't understanding why. He had to pull that back and I just didn't get it, so I just wanted to touch bases on that because I thought that that was important. Important for me considering that two days ago was the first of my acknowledgement that someone would try to help me find. Somewhere, um, and this has been dragging on for at least four to five months. And I think that probably could have helped some of my struggle and pain that I have been going through. And also with the parking, it has been very unfair because, um. I, this is a community, they've been there longer than me, so they have built relationships with each other that, you know, I'm new there. Those businesses been standing there for five to ten years plus, um, if I do my research on them, um, but. That has even been become hard and unfair to get in a parking permit, like I had people. Agreed to it and then when I talked to them a week later, their mind changed out of the blue and I just wasn't understanding why. So I did wanna, you know, say something about that and then also mention I have three bars within. I'll say maybe five hundred feet from me, so when they say about. The timing and everything, I close at eleven PM all, all the time, even from since opening day. So I don't see how that interferes with a bar that closes at two thirty AM, that's just to touch bases on, you know, like the community and just. What I'm getting, you know, and the backlash and everything, you know, like. How it's coming to me like as the tenant, so. Just did wanna share that information because I feel that it is important considering that, you know, it may. With you guys' decision.
Madam Chair, if I could just respond to that, there has been some, some new emails, uh, within the past few days, uh, re-engaging on this. But Ms. Brown will recall that I spoke with her on the phone in December, uh, detailing all of this. And, and just, uh, explaining some of the obstacles, uh, in, including the, the building code issues potentially. Uh, so, so any characterization that I haven't been engaged, I, I think is incorrect. I also, uh, don't, uh, think it's, uh, appropriate to suggest that I've been moving the needle on local businesses. I've actually spoken with, uh, a number of the businesses, you know, uh, after all of this came to light, uh, some. Were in opposition, some were actually supportive, um, but, but the, the fact of the matter is that because of those bars and because of existing. Parking agreements that they have with other area businesses. Businesses are unable to have a signed legally binding agreement guaranteeing off-street parking. Because those spots have already been committed elsewhere, um, so that's, that's, I just wanna offer that clarification, thank you.
Okay, um, uh, to the building owner and then we're going to go ahead and, um, uh, have commission members, uh, speak.
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to mention is, uh, I know Shannon had mentioned it within the, her presentation that. Within the lease, it says it can only be an, an event space, and the only reason why we put that within our leases is. So we don't get a, in a situation where somebody says it's gonna be this type of business. And then all of a sudden it becomes a different kind of business, so we try and put specifically what the business is. So we aren't surprised as a property owner and handcuffed that they say there can be one type of business. And then when they open up, it's a different kind of business, so it's not that, you know, however you want to sort of characterize how the. It could only be this type of thing, we, we've always been flexible, but we wanna be cautious. That if somebody commits that they're gonna be doing this, that's, that's what they're going to do. And we're not gonna be surprised down the road that it's gonna be something else after they already signed the, the lease, so that's. That's why we put the type of business within the, the lease itself.
Question to you, did, did you know, are you aware that this was not in compliance and that you had obligations? To meet for this tenant?
I, we were not aware of, of what needed to be done because again, in the past, there were. You know, mass gathering type of business within the, the exact same location and, you know. Why it was allowed back then and then all of a sudden it changed and we're unaware that, uh, things needed to be altered, no, we were not aware of that.
And even, even though that they were previous uses that had changed multiple times. Or that the assembly use would require bathrooms and other things that, that, that by code. You need for assembly?
Well, in, in the sense though, her, her assembly is very small and that, I think I forwarded a copy of a lease that Precanna uses. For Shana uses that, that, you know, she only limits, even within the lease, a certain number of people within the space. So, and, and she only has, you know, uh, seating and accommodations for, you know, under fifty for that space, so. Whether, you know, I, I know the code that, that Shannon had presented that needs to be more than that because it's. That I can't remember what it was, more than fifteen people for event space, but it's different for retail space. It's a different code, you know, the, that, that nuance we were unaware of. Cause it's never been an issue with all our other retail spaces within the same building, so.
But you acknowledged that the lease is not in compliance.
Uh, well, I, I would like to know what part of it is not in compliance.
The number of bathrooms, the use, the parking.
Ms. Leonard was made aware of the parking that we only can provide and whether that goes beyond that, um, that I don't know. I can only, I can only control that what we have, we have what spaces are within our own property.
Right, but I'm, I'm, I'm acknowledging that, that what was agreed on was not.
She, she did tour the space and, you know, we expressed our concerns on parking, but. You know, there is adequate street parking for that area, so, you know, whether you're saying that. Well, that's street parking's taken up for the residences and it can't be used for businesses that. You know, I, I didn't know that residences can, you know, reserve street parking, so.
No, I, I, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying that, that, that this use was not. Was not permitted without variance. So I'll stop this and open it up to commission members for a motion or any conversation, we'll close the.
I'd like to make a motion that, um, the conditional use permit be granted with the conditions. As stated in the presentation.
I'm gonna second, this is Paul. We have a motion and a discussion, um, any further, um, further, um, discussion?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna abstain, this is all just.
Okay, we have an abstention. I will say that the, um, that this, uh, that granting this. Does require significant improvements to the property. And a kind of undue burden and I want to, to acknowledge that they are for the, the owner, not for the less C. To meet these requirements because there are significant requirements. Even if we grant this, that I believe cannot be met, which are the parking requirements. And the changes to the physical structure to meet the use requirements, so even by passing this. Though the burden of those fall to the property owner to meet. For this less C to be in compliance, they are not to the less C to meet those requirements. So with that, if there's no further discussion, um, if we can have, uh. The roll. Yes. Yes.
Chris Scott.
Yes. Yes. An abstention from August and, uh, motion carries, um, and, um, I think that, uh. If the staff can keep us updated on how this proceeds, that would be, be good and, and thank you all.
And, and, and Ms., Ms. Curry, I, I just wanna state, um. Thank, thank you of the commission members for, uh, you know, rendering a decision. I think a point of frustration from the community has been, uh. A misrepresentation at, at official meetings versus what's experienced as it relates to hours, as it relates to parking, as it relates to. The sale of liquor and, um, I, I think that was evidenced by, by Ms. Brown. Characterizing that, that me and the development corporation have not been attempting to be helpful. And, and I just wanna just state that because I, 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 I don't, I don't appreciate the insinuation of how I've been engaging this process, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's go on to the, the next matter, it's a design review case, um, and I'm gonna need to swear in the applicants if they are here. Is Kurt here or anyone else to speak to this matter?
Kurt is here.
Okay, anybody else? Do you swear, just you, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as usual answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes, I do.
I understand that, uh, this is coming back, um, and we've heard this and it's because of a little bit of a shift in terms of the sighting. I'm gonna ask that you really focus on what has changed since we gave final design approval. Um, and we don't need to see the entire presentation, just what is, what is, what has changed?
Let me.
Madam Chair, is it possible for the staff, uh, Kim Scotch, just to provide additional reasoning for. Why it's appearing again?
Yes.
I, I can help cover this section, Kim, are you there?
No, this is Kim and I'm here and I apologize, I'm driving to court, so, um. This came back because the placement of the building needed to be shifted to the south by fifteen feet. You all know, when you, uh, provide final approval, you're providing the approval for the, the placement, the massing and the. Complete final design and all of that, nothing, none of. None of the massing and the design has changed with the, with the, uh, project, it's only the placement. And I will, um, ask Mr. Uptograph to explain the reason that the, the, uh. The details for why the building had to be shifted back fifteen feet, this related to utilities. And if you want to give a brief description, Kurt, that would be great, but make sure that it's brief, thank you.
Yeah, that's fine, I can't, uh, I can't share my, the, the, the site plan, so I, I guess you'll have to, uh. Yeah, we can try to find the, uh, site plan. On the presentation, basically, that's good, basically, um. Fulton is a street. uh, Fulton is a street that runs east and west between E seventy-fifth, which is the uh, uh, up and down street on the left and E seventy-ninth on the right. That's to be vacated by the city as part of this project that runs right through the proposed building. Uh, we discovered that within Holden is a twelve inch intermediate pressure gas line, which needs to be rerouted. It can't simply be abandoned. So it would be rerouted to the north, just south of Opportunity Corridor. Uh, it's about an eight month process. We've been working with the gas company to build our building over the existing gas line while they're relocating it to the north. Uh, but to do that, we have to shift where our footers are. They happen to line up right on top of the gas line. So we have shoved it to the south towards the bottom of the page, which, uh, increases the setback from Opportunity Corridor by fifteen feet. Right now it's about fifty-six feet as originally approved. So it will be about seventy-one feet uh, after the shift. Uh, in, in either case, uh, it, it was always more than the setback required by code. So we're, uh, there, there were no variances or anything like that. So it's, uh, it's just adding more lawn between the building and Opportunity Corridor.
And we, are you, it says in the notes that you'll come back with a revised landscaping plan, uh, especially for that, um, setback in terms of what you'll be doing. Will you come back to staff with that?
Um, that was a question. I was hoping that we could in fact come back to staff and have them approve it.
Yeah.
As opposed to going through two more meetings. You know.
Yeah.
I, I will tell you that I, we did have a, a drawing done, um, for, uh, you know, with the, with the landscaping. It's really not changing much. Uh, through the course of this process, there's existing, uh, CEI poles running east and west, parallel to Opportunity Corridor on the north of our site. CEI has told us they want a fifty-foot easement there. So it's really not leaving much space between the edge of the easement and the face of the building to add landscaping. We ended up shifting a little bit of it a little further north to get it closer to Opportunity Corridor, but it's really not going to show much of a change, to be honest with you.
Okay. Uh, commission members?
Madam Chair, we do have, with their hand raised?
Okay.
I just wanted to provide additional comments. Uh, we are supportive of the change primarily because of utilities uh, being an issue. We primarily wanted this to come before the commission, uh, for the record because this is a new form-based code pilot zone. And so we just wanted to note that we did not want to set precedent by having additional setbacks. Um, but for this case, because of utilities that, that we, we are supportive of this. Thank you.
I move approval, Downing.
We have a motion.
McCray Scott.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further comment? Um, I would ask commission members if you might, um, make the note to the motion that this applicant can come back to staff with the landscaping plan and, and I would argue that maybe you should add additional landscaping, but you do not have to come back to the commission. Is that okay with um, the, um, commission members?
Yes, I will add that to my motion, Madam Chair.
Yes. Okay. Okay. Um, any further comments? Um, can call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker.
Abstaining.
Hurry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. So this does not need to come back. Um, you can come back to staff with the landscaping details. Um, the next item is, you're welcome. Thank you, is East two zero two two dash zero zero one. Um, this is pro- promote, proposed demolition of a two-story structure at one zero eight one Oak Fernal Court and, uh, Latoya Alamin, can I swear you in?
Uh, a- actually, this is Daryl Curtis. I'm representative of the owner. Lightning demolition is our demolition contractor. Um, so I'm representing for this.
Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, so yeah, the, this and the next one, they're just houses that are in disrepair in the New Economy Neighborhood, um, just east of the Opportunity Corridor. And, uh, we're just seeking final approval to demolish them.
I move approval, Downing.
I can, Lucker.
My motion and a second, can call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker. Hurry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Um, I think we have to do these separately because there were two, correct? Uh, is that correct? There are two. So the second one is one zero seven dash zero seven Arthur Avenue. Um, so I'll need a motion separately for the second one, which is on the screen.
I move approval, Downing.
Second, Lucker.
We have a motion and a second. Can we call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Motion carries. Um, thank you. Um, the next item is the Far West Design Review, Lake Avenue Apartments and Townhomes. This is two zero two two dash zero zero five at eight four zero zero Lake Avenue. Uh, Brandon's here from Geis. Is there anyone else that's presenting?
I'm Brad Knowson, I'm with the development team. I'm just going to say hi and introduce ourselves.
Um, I'll just swear you both in in case you get any questions. Um, do you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay. All right. This is actually for final approval?
Conceptual.
Or sorry, conceptual approval?
We'll take it though. That's good.
No, well, maybe, we'll see.
No, we don't have enough information.
Right.
Madam Chair, we, we do have Adam Davenport and Ms. McCray Scott also with their hands raised. I'm not sure if they just wanted to be sworn or, I'm not sure.
Okay. And I don't know if staff wants to go first. We'll maybe see the presentation and then we'll hear from the staff too as well.
That was a mistake. No, no.
Okay. All right. Take it away and then.
Sorry, Lilian, I apologize. I think, uh, our, our partners, Kenez are on as well and Sixmo, Patrick Thornton. Um, they should probably get sworn in as well. I apologize.
Okay. Um, if they're also speaking, um, do you all swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury? Okay. Um, all right, take it away. And I assume then we'll hear from staff after the presentation.
Just want to introduce myself. I'm Brad Knowson. I'm with Property Advisors Group, um, which is largely a, a family company. And we are working with Kenez and Sixmo as well as, uh, Geis. Uh, this project, we're really excited about it. One of the things that guys excited, um, was the, um, form-based zoning that's proposed for the site. Um, hopefully, um, you know, love to see that pass, obviously, but we're gonna, we're attempting to design the project, um, to meet with, uh, uh, to meet the requirements of the form-based zoning, um, should that get passed. Um, so that's how we designed this. Um, had a great relationship working with the Northwest Neighborhoods Community Development Corporation so far. Um, had a very positive feedback from the neighborhood. Um, and we received, I believe, our conceptual approval from the West, Far West Design Review Board. So uh, really happy with the progress so far. So we appreciate you guys taking the time. I'll let Brandon go from here.
Good, uh, good morning, everyone. Um, and I'll try to be brief through the process and it's the first time you guys have seen it, but it is our intention to come back for conceptual schematic and final. So, um, the idea here is to focus on site orientation, massing and, and, and the overall development, uh, at this point. Uh, and we'll have further detail. So, uh, the site is a, a unique site. It's a, um, relatively open site. There's two small warehouse structures hidden behind the, um, uh, existing, uh, foliage, uh, on the site. Um, there's obviously been a significant amount of investment to Lake Avenue, uh, with the bike path, uh, and, and bike lane uh, and street improvements. Um, so here's just some views to the site, uh, from various, various angles in, in the air. Go to the next slide. Here's some street context, uh, to the area. It's a unique site because it's deep and most of the building will not be fronting Lake Avenue. Um, there'll be a townhouse as a, on the, uh, more residential scale of Lake Avenue with the apartment building in the rear of the site. Um, so we do have, uh, we call it the Baker Extension, which is really a private access drive between low chemical building, uh, which you see in the bottom two right pictures, um, which will, uh, will be treated like a, a street. Um, next slide. Um, as mentioned, uh, this project is being designed to, uh, conform with the new form-based zoning. Uh, even though we understand that it's not formally approved yet, uh, it's our hope and intention that it will be done, uh, before uh, the project gets submitted. Uh, if it's not, we will pursue zoning variances to conform with the new form-based go- uh, zone coding uh, as we go through the process and, 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 and through that aspect. That new proposed zoning, it is a split zone, um, and basically the townhouse development is on a three-story, um, uh, parcel in the, uh, rear of the site in the purple, uh, is a seven-story, um, mixed-use, uh, parcel. Next slide. Just some overall site inspiration context of the project. Uh, we have a large, uh, green space that will be open to the public in the center courtyard um, of the seven-story structure of the apartment building. Um, just some ideas and thought process. We have a ten-foot wide, uh, bike and walking path that we're hoping is a spawn to be a catalyst um, for future connections to get to Edgewater Park and, uh, to the Pike Pass. It was a part of the master plan in the, uh, for the area. Uh, and so we wanted to respect that and incorporate that into the project. Additionally, creating a, a, a mature foliage and mature green space, uh, and, and unique experience within, uh, that area along the seven-story buildings. That would include bocce courts, uh, some community gardens, uh, dog park, um, probably some fire pits and seating areas, uh, and then creating kind of a really unique walking bike path around the perimeter of the site on the westerly side with some in-ground lighting, uh, to create kind of an ambient glow, uh, and, and encouraging, you know, a safe, a safe manner. Uh, next slide. So here's the overall, uh, site plan, uh, in orientation. As we mentioned, there's thirteen, uh, twenty by forty townhomes on the front of the site along Lake Avenue and the C-shaped, uh, apartment building, uh, oriented with views to the city skyline and lake. Um, with that central courtyard that has a, again, it's an open public courtyard. It's intended to be a community benefit, uh, and, and additional green space for the community along with kind of a park, a pocket entry park. The designs of that, we're, we're obviously here just a conceptual states of just placemakers here. Um, we'll start refining and, uh, working through community feedback, uh, to what uh, program needs to be included within and then also, um, uh, the, the true design of that. Um, overall, the building's a seven-story structure, two stories of parking podium, five stories of, of, uh, wood construction apartments, a hundred and seven units. Uh, we have a hundred and seventy parking spaces, so a one-to-one ratio for the apartment building and two car garages for all of the townhomes, uh, for parking compliance. There'll be eleven parking spaces that are, uh, unsecure at the basically adjacent to the courtyards and a courtyard. Um, it will be accessed off of that private drive. Uh, to utilize that space. Next slide. This is just a, uh, footprint and, uh, floor plans for the townhouses themselves, a twenty by forty module. Um, three stories with a penthouse for roof deck access off of those. Next slide. Here's a inspiration exterior board of the materiality of the project. Uh, the intention for the building is to have a modern industrial feel. Um, and, and fit into the context because there's a, a lot of adjacent industrial buildings that have, uh, um, a pretty significant impact, uh, adjacent, but then create, uh, kind of a modern flair with it utilizing divided light windows. Uh, a brick that has a, a heavy varnish and, and kind of wear to it. So again, making sure that it looks uh, like it's been there for a while, not a start of the building. And then the bottom right, you can kind of see some of the ideas on the garage screening of the two stories of garages. I should mention, we did look at this project as doing a one-story podium, elevating that roof deck, uh, patio to the second floor, uh, for the amenity space. We just felt it was better to be connected to the ground, open to the public and not creating kind of, I'll say, a, a full site build-out, uh, uh, parking deck, you know, concrete structure, uh, that couldn't utilize some of the, the greenery and, and spatial conditions. We felt even though it was a more expensive option, it was the right option for this project and also gave us a little bit more height for better views on the upper floors. Uh, so it was worth the investment. Next slide. Here's a exterior, uh, inspiration board for the, for the townhouses. Again, uh, we'll be back with the actual designs of all the exteriors of the buildings. And, uh, with more detail. Next slide. Here's a conceptual massing. Again, just to give you a sense of scale, uh, area of, of buildings in, in the area and, you know, the rear of Baker uh, in the site has a considerable amount of industrial, uh, projects, even though there's a lot of single-family homes along Lake Avenue. Uh, but to give you kind of a sense of scale of, of the architecture or the, the massing, again, meant to be a white box right now. Um, because we're, we're really focusing on the site orientation and, and, and program. Next slide. Here's you looking to the west, again, of the building and scale, the seven-story, uh, apartment building in the rear, uh, with the three-story townhouses in the front. Next slide. And then here's a street view looking at that kind of pocket park entrance that will create kind of a nice, uh, focal entry to that walking path and element as you, you know, walk around the building. And I think we have one more slide that we just wanted to show. Here's some of the style of architecture that we're planning for as we continue to progress and refine the design. Um, you can see that the, uh, the parking garage screening, um, elements is going to be mixed mesh and decorative fins, uh, to kind of leave an open-air garage, but continue the architectural style and flavor. Um, the idea here again is a industrial building with, uh, uh, looking building, uh, in a modern take with a segmented panel that has some ribbing at various widths. Um, that is kind of the modern condition of the industrial brick. Uh, so obviously, uh, very early on in the stages of the conceptual aspects, um, I should note just for the commission and maybe Adam will get into the details, but we did have five conditions with this project that were very well received from the neighborhood and then also a designer view. Um, we feel that we can accommodate as we continue to refine all those elements pretty well. And I've already started thinking about some of those comments and suggestions. Um, and a lot of the emphasis was just ensuring that we uh, have an appropriate amount of foliage. We're taking away a fair amount of larger trees in this area and, uh, we strongly agree and understand that that's something that we need to design within the project that we also want it to be a beautification of the site and an attribute um, to these buildings and neighborhoods.
Uh, commission members, any comment? Sorry.
Madam Chair, could we go back to the site plan?
Is that what you needed, August?
Yeah, it's kind of small, but I.
I could blow it up. Hold, hold on a second.
Question, my question where the townhouses occur, do, do you? Are, are you guys going to be a little more, um, sensitive to how that auto court is treated? So it's not just concrete and your traditional go-to?
And, and one of the.
Sarcastic.
No, and, 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 uh, I don't want to steal Adam's, uh, discussion points here from all the, the neighbors and, and also designer view. There was some really good suggestions about trying to see if we can angle the townhomes. Um, you know, the idea was to match the angle of Lake Avenue, but that's not unable to be done without reducing a significant amount of pads for the townhomes. But we can skew that a little bit to create an opening and allow a view corridor to the main entry to the apartment building. Um, and in doing such as well, we're going to kind of choke down that court. Right now it's, uh, pretty wide width. It's at twenty-eight feet between the townhomes and it can easily be twenty-foot. So again, allowing more buffer on the perimeter of the left, uh, of the, of the townhouses to the west, um, to allow for a nicer entry.
And another thing, I understand efficiency with townhouses with, I, I'm an advocate of having some sort of bad door off that court. And I, I believe Madam Chair has expressed that concern previously. I, I just think it creates a better environment for the people who live there. In my opinion. So you're, you're not having to open your garage door to go out and just see what the heck's going on in, in the world. Just a thought.
Commission members, any other comments or questions?
Go ahead, Diane. I'm sorry.
I move approval.
Madam.
Downing.
We still haven't, we still haven't heard from Mr. Davenport.
Okay, well, how about this, um, since there is. Okay, well, uh, how about this? Um, since there is a motion, I'm going to ask for a second. We have still, we can hear from the staff and then also make any comments or changes. Um, so we have a motion and a second. So Adam, if you want to go ahead and then we'll take any other discussion.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, nothing particularly to add towards the, the design. I think that the concept is, was well received by the committee. Um, the development of this, the central green space and more of a, a main entry point because the main building is set back from Lake is important to the committee. Uh, but overall, we're excited that this is kind of the first major project that's coming through the Form Based Code Pilot Area for Detroit-Troeway. Um, and excited about continuing some themes. Um, from those, those studies and, uh, and the pilot about, uh, especially about the, um, the bike path kind of surrounding the site. That's something that the, if you're familiar with the Edison Development, that also takes place there. Uh, but planning kind of for the future of this northern kind of triangle, uh, Lake Avenue area around the, the waterfront and the railroad right here. Uh, we think is important for, for future developments of the low cal, low chemical and kind of Alcon site as well. Thank you.
And we have Director Wong with.
Thank you. Um, is, I would like to also share that the Northwest Neighborhood CDC submitted a letter reporting out on community engagement. So there have been two community engagement meetings where, uh, citizens were broadly supportive, including one that had forty-eight people. And there were a few themes that were shared, um, that they would like to desire in the next iteration of, uh, schematic design. Um, or, uh, even in sort of the conceptual development. Um, so there, uh, if, if I may, I can share those briefly. So there was a strong desire for a tree canopy replacement strategy because, uh, this development site contains one of the highest concentrations of existing canopy cover in that census block. Uh, there is a desire for more dynamic green space, particularly the pocket park proposed for the Lake Avenue facing side of the project. There were concerns regarding pressures on on-street parking. And then there's a desire for an affordability component which, uh, may not necessarily be under the purview of this particular body, but, uh, was a part of the letter. Uh, residents express general support for the massing configuration as well as the proposed walking and bike trail on the western border of the development site.
I think we can incorporate those into the motion. If that makes sense.
Yes, I'm fine with that, Madam Chair.
And, uh, didn't, Denise, are you okay with that as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve conceptually with the design review comments, um, for consideration. As the project's developed, um, are there any other comments or questions? Um, okay, so we'll call the roll.
Counting.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Chris Scott.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Life.
A motion carries. Um, the next item, thank you all. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Um, this is a Far West Design Review, Old Tony's renovation and partial demolition. Uh, one-seven-two-nine or one-seven-two-zero-nine Lorraine Avenue. Uh, is Lisa here to speak to this matter?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Uh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Um, okay. Um, and this demolition, um, please go ahead.
All right, so we, uh, have owned the building, the Old Tony's building for approximately twenty-five years. Um, that was my very first construction project when I started with the company all those years ago. So it is definitely near and dear to my heart. Um, and, and we only want the best for the building. So we're facing two problems there. We've got, uh, we feel the big problem, obviously everyone says that there's no parking. Um, w- we do have parking, a majority of the parking to the building is actually ours. Uh, we sit on the corner and the public house sits next to us. Over the years, we've purchased buildings, we've torn down buildings, um, in order to get more parking. There's approximately forty-one spots in the lot. Approximately, uh, approximately eleven of them belonging to Public House and about thirty belonging to our building. Um, we do have an easement for Public House to use our drives in and off of Rocky River Drive and Lorraine Avenue. Um, so what we're proposing in downsizing the footprint of the current building i- is our other problem. We feel that the, the building is too large. We get a tenant in there, they last for three to five years and then they end up going out of business. We've talked about this, you know, for years. We feel that, you know, the business is all gung-ho. They go into the building. They're excited about it and then within a year or two, they just, the, the owners kind of step back. They let their managers take over. And the businesses are just not succeeding. So we feel if we downsize, um, the building itself, there is, uh, the old part of the house that sits in the front, which is the Oswald Cam's old building, the original building. Um, we're thinking back in about the nineteen-fifties, there was an addition that was put on the back of the building. Um, and then about fifteen years ago, one of our tenants put on the tiki bar that is all the way at the back of the building for an outside patio. So if we, we feel by taking off the outside patio and taking off the back part of the building, which is not original to the old house. Um, we would, you know, add a few, we would add approximately nine parking spots, which parking is an issue. And then it would downsize the, um, footprint of the building in hopefully bringing in a prospective tenant that feels that it would be more manageable for them. Um, the, the second floor, there, there is a, a space on the second floor that, that has never really been utilized because we feel like the first floor is just too large. So, so, yes, so that is, um, that is our plan. I don't know if you want to go through the slides. We can show, you know, the pers- the demolition floor plan of what's coming off. Then we've got the proposed floor plan. You can look from there, uh, on this view here, the proposed site plan, it shows the new, um, patio that we would want to put in. Um, everybody is in need and wanting patios, so we feel if we put a patio on that's more proportioned to the building itself. Um, would be a great addition. And then obviously the, uh, the approximate nine spots that we gain and then we'd put in, um, you know, the new landscaping and everything for that area. We did receive, on Wednesday, we did receive the conceptual approval, um, from the Far West Design Committee with a few conditions, but they were really conditions that would be, once we have the architectural drawings. We have not gone into architectural drawings at this point, other than what you see. Because we're just, you know, we're wanting to get the conceptual approval before we move that forward.
Madam Chair, I, or to the staff, are, is this for the demolition or is it for the approval of the concept plan as, as well?
Madam Chair, if I may step in, uh, Commissioner Fluker. What I've done is I've combined the two, uh, for design review into one agenda item for planning commission. So that you can just do one motion for both, unless you feel you need to split them apart because it's just for conceptual approval.
Well, well, given, given that context, then I, I would to approve of the applicant's request as, as outlined.
Madam Chair, we do have Mr. Davenport, too. You're muted. Lily, and you're muted.
I apologize. Um, before we just make a motion, I just, I did want to state that the councilman, who I think had to leave, um, stated that he, he also, he was okay actually if this was final approval with the, the landscaping and the plans coming back, what the demolition would be final. So I just wanted to raise that, um, uh, but the details could come back and I think he was even okay if they came back to staff and to local, but, um, I just wanted to, to throw that in there. We can do whatever we, we want, but, um, but he was really supportive of this, so.
Before I amend my motion, uh, may we hear from Mr. Davenport?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, that was going to be my one clarification, actually. Everybody on the committee was very supportive of the demolition, so if that is, um, you know, a, a choice by the applicant or they, they want to start with that work. Um, the local committee was fine with that, uh, and then they can come back for final approval for the the specifics on the, the building materials, uh, elevations and landscape plan. Thank you.
Okay, I, um, I then therefore amend my motion to include, um, that the applicant come back for final approval for, um, exterior improvements considered.
Okay, so we have a motion for the final approval of the demolition. Um, and, um, and that the, uh, and can I clarify, August, are you okay if it comes back to local and staff or do you want it to come back here for the?
I'm, I'm sorry, yes, with, with the caveat that they come back before staff and/or local and not back to the planning commission.
Okay.
Um, I'll agree to that as a second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any other discussion before we call the roll? All right, Michael, go ahead.
Counting.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Uh, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, it's a great project. Um, so you could corridor design review, zero-two-zero-two-one-dash-zero-three-three Cleveland Midtown Delta Hotel renovation. This is seeking final approval, thirty-six-fourteen Euclid Avenue. Uh, and, uh, is Chris and Christine and Bill here, all three, or anyone who's going to speak? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes, this is Christine Raymond, I do.
Okay. Um, all right, so I think, uh, we'll hear from the applicants and then we'll hear from the staff for any recommendations and then discussion, so, um, take it away.
Great. So this is Christine Raymond from Kazma Architects. Um, I was asked to make a brief presentation for this project, so we will do that. Good morning. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Um, this is the existing university hotel and suites that is on the south side of Euclid near East Thirty-Sixth Street. It is going to be primarily an interior renovation project, um, completely renovated on the interior with some improvements to the exterior, a couple um, minor additions as well as, uh, a re, um, work of the parking lot. So if you go to next slide, please. So this is the existing site. It's on the south side of Euclid. We can just scroll through a few of these existing conditions, uh, photos. This is a view from the east. It's a ten-story building built in the mid-nineteen-sixties, originally built as a Holiday Inn. Um, it will be converted to a Delta Hotel by Marriott. And this is the view along Euclid as it stands today. Some, the project includes a removal of that existing canopy and a new canopy that you see in the top left corner there. And so that's a good view, the east elevation. Um, the exterior work that'll occur includes removal and replacement with, of all the windows on the upper floors. Excuse me, the existing through-wall air conditioning units will be removed and be replaced with internal air conditioning units. The glass and glazing systems on the first floor will be replaced. The existing area that's shown in white on the first floor that's brick is going to be replaced with aluminum and glass storefront. And then as well, I mentioned that portico chair will be removed and replaced. Next slide, please. The existing site, um, access points are going to remain the same. Vehicular access from Euclid at the north and vehicular access from Prospect to the south. The parking lot will be resurfaced and restripped. And where we can, we're introducing some greenery and some landscape in the new site plan, which is the next slide. So you can see it, it gets greened up a little bit with some tree islands where we can fit them. Um, our parking is, is less than one per room for the hotel, so we, we aren't overparked. The, there will be a hundred and eighty-eight guest rooms when following the renovation. And the, on the north side and the south side, the existing, uh, fencing, fencing will be removed and replaced with new fencing. As well as landscaping along those property lines. At the north, there's along the par- uh, along the parking area, there are some existing planter walls that are in, in poor shape that will be removed. And then replaced with perennial and grass landscaping along a new decorative fence. As well at the, uh, northwest corner, the outdoor patio area that's labeled there, that's an outdoor pool right now that will be filled in. And the, that area will be opened up with a new decorative fence. There's a currently a brick wall there that is in disrepair that will be removed. Can move to the next slide, please. Okay, so the north elevation facing Euclid. All, all of the existing concrete and, uh, exposed structure, that will all be repaired as needed and refinished. Um, there are areas that are partially painted and that are, are failing that, so the entire, there'll be a facelift to the entire project, to the hotel tower. Um, there's some existing wall-mounted signage that will be removed and then replaced with new Delta Hotel brand signage. And then along Euclid, at the, uh, pedestrian level, there are some existing raised planter walls that are in disrepair and will be removed and new landscaping will be provided. And then you can see on the left side of your screen, the north elevation of the new cantilevered canopy structure that is replacing that, uh, portico chair that will be demolished. To the right on that screen is the new decorative fence, which will open up that outdoor patio area to the pedestrian way, um, along Euclid. And then on the left side of that screen, there's also a new ornamental fence along the parking lot as well as a landscape bed. Continuous along that fence as well. All of these other notes, any of the brick that is currently, um, there's different colors of painting and everything. We will repaint that to blend in and match with the existing brick colors. Now, next slide, please. Next slide, please. Okay, so the east elevation, this is a view of now on that, at the first floor, all of the storefront system that will be new along the ground plane. And then as well, the cantilevered portico chair, which will consist of five columns. They are, they will be clad in, um, metal panels in a dark bronze color, contrasting the existing white structure of the building. On the left side of this screen is one of the additions, which is a service elevator tower. There is no service elevator in the, in the building now. And one is required for, um, the function of the hotel. So it will be located at the south side, which is left side of your screen, and it will be clad in brick to match the existing south elevation. Which I think is the next slide, will show the south elevation. Yes, so the south elevation is, um, currently, uh, brick facade and that service elevator tower that you see in the center with the new Delta brand signage will be clad in brick to match. And it will run full height of the building. And then all of the work down at the one-story will be repair and refinishing of existing masonry.
Thank you.
Yep. I think we have some renderings that we can, the west elevation's basically the same as the east, so we, we have a couple renderings that we can show and so this is a view from Euclid showing you three dimensionally what the new portico chair will look like. It's got a curved underside with recessed lighting. There will be, um, new uplighting added to the building. Um, there's currently uplighting on the tower now that some functions and some does not. That will be removed. That will be removed and replaced with new LED light fixtures. There is one monument sign proposed, which is to the left of this vehicular entrance on your screen there. Think there might be a better view of that on the next slide. It's a lower-scale monument sign. Okay, I guess it doesn't show too well there, but this is a view across the parking lot of the east elevation, the new portico chair, and then that elevator tower on the south is shown in that view as well. And there you can see the lower-scale monument sign that will be new. There'll be three flagpoles proposed opposite the entrance, as well as a large landscape bed sort of central to the parking lot.
Okay. Are there any other renderings, Maurice? Oh, there's a close-up. Commission members, any questions or discussion?
Madam Chair, I did have a question. Is this going to be a full-service hotel with banquet facilities? Or is it just going to be the rooms?
Yes, there currently is a ballroom in the hotel that will be repurposed into a divisible meeting area, meeting room. It's not an overly large ballroom, but there is meeting space. And there will also be a restaurant and bar that primarily serves the hotel guests within the hotel. But there will be also food and beverage, and it is a full-service hotel.
Okay. Commission members, any comments or questions? There's landscaping plan as well.
I move to approval. Downing.
And just to clarify, is this final approval again? This is final approval?
Yes. We received final approval from Euclid Corridor yesterday.
Second, Fluker. And we'll just, we'll put, I don't know if you guys remember, this used to be the Shangri-La Inn. This is where most business deals were conducted. So there's some history here. Respect it.
My only comment is, if you go back to the rendering, and I'm not gonna require it, but if you go back up to the rendering that shows from Euclid Avenue, the first rendering, Maurice. The small brick kind of, gonna keep going up? Maurice?
Sure, yeah, I'm getting there. Which slide did you want?
Keep going. I'll tell you. Keep going. One more of that. So my question here is that, from a kind of vehicular level, I'm so glad you guys are renovating the hotel. So don't get me wrong, I love the project. It's much-needed. It's been long overdue. So, but this small brick building that faces Euclid Avenue, that is, for me, at the pedestrian scale, and I know there's a signage issue, but, and you're putting a monument sign that doesn't show up here, but that I can see it by the door. I just wonder if there's, there might be an openness by staff to consider some smaller signage or something on the blank brick facade that is up against the sidewalk. And the only reason I say that is that, from a pedestrian point of view, what everyone is gonna see is this little brick kind of bump out. So as a designer, August, I don't know what you think about that. But the idea of even a smaller kind of rendition of the Delta Hotel sign if it met code down at that level, too, in addition to the monument sign or something, just because it's kind of a harsh pedestrian edge.
That's a good point, Madam Chair, because I've walked that path for a lot of years, because our offices used to be located. And it just doesn't feel welcoming. So I think that would be great addition.
Motion, but if the applicants had interest, I think you'd know that the planning commission would be supportive, even if it's kind of additional signage, to have the logo or the Delta Hotel smaller there along on the brick as well. So I just think it'll just add something that might help for pedestrians. Won't be so auto-oriented.
On behalf of the planning staff, we would welcome that. Thank you.
Would you be okay, Christine, if we added that to the motion?
We certainly can consider it. I think we also will need approval from the brand for any signage that we incorporate. So, but we can certainly take a look at it to bring something down to that pedestrian scale. I just can't guarantee that what we can do and what we cannot do.
I mean, for me, it could even just be the D, if you will. If you brought the D down, too, it would help, just something along there.
That is something we can review with them.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
So we have a motion and a second. Can I ask the, my colleagues if they would add consideration of a smaller sign at the pedestrian level?
Yes, I'm fine with adding that to the motion.
And I think-
I think you seconded it.
Yes, I, yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay, can I call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. I ask that you report back to staff on that last matter, either way. And I think that I'd ask the planning director if you could sort of monitor if that's possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Euclid Corridor Design Review, this is 1830 East 82nd Street. Brandon, again, is here. This was granted schematic approval with some conditions. And I don't think I need to swear you in, Brandon, if you're the only one speaking. I would ask, though, that you solely focus on the conditions, and you do not need to present the entire project again.
Yeah, I'll be completely brief on this one. In fact, I think at the last motion, it was almost contemplated about us just working with staff as we got to this next stage. So, next slide. Just the site, Brookline and East 82nd, just south of Huff. Next couple of slides, it's just the context of the area. The site itself, next slide. Next slide. So site orientation, the building siding didn't change. The only aspect of this that we did make modifications for is the additional landscaping on the rear of the site to screen the parking from the adjacent East 81st Street homes, which we added in addition to. Also, during design review, it was noted to ask if we could add some landscape screening to the north and south of our property line, which we agreed to as well, to screen basically both the parking lot from three sides with some minimal lower landscaping. Next slide. Next slide. Just some changes. It was asked, and, not this project, but we presented another project at the same time, for these buildings to maybe get a little bit of an upgraded material. So we did work through that a little bit. The big change from a materiality perspective is we're using, from what was a split-face CMU, it's gonna be a half-height masonry blend unit, so four-inch by 16-inch. And it does give a really nice variation in material, so it won't be a single masonry color. Has a blend of some light grays and some darker grays to be able to pronounce the lower portion of the building. Wasn't noted on this project, but it was something we wanted to make an adjustment towards. And then the big item is here, is there were some eyebrows above the white areas, the board and batten on the front elevation. We got rid of those and changed the material to kind of create a little bit of a cap. It was well-received at the design review yesterday with that change. It'll be shown in renderings next. Landscape plan has been unchanged around the building and foundation plantings. Next slide. Here's just the rendering. So we showcased, we changed the entryway to have a metal siding, black metal siding to kind of have a stronger and more pronounced entry. And then, as I said, the treatments of above-the-white board and batten system with the horizontal gray material with a pronounced trim at that intersection. Next slide. And just another view of that. Next slide. I think that's it, though. Here's just the renderings of the materials. Again, the major noted change was just the masonry blend. That was changed from being a full-height CMU. I think that's it. Maybe there's a site lighting plan. So site lighting, perimeter, parking lot lighting, and then some wall packs on the building, and then balcony wall sconces. And then, we put some Ballard lights along the pathway entrances for the walk-up units and the entrance off the street. That is it. That's the previous submitted rendering that you guys saw last time.
Mission members?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to thank Brandon for attempting to create some animation on the pedestrian level with the walk-ups. You know, it helps with the neighborhood, so I think it's a pretty good, nice touch.
I agree. I agree, and the corner, too.
Right, exactly. You know, as I'm watching all these presentations, and maybe this is a comment for later, but I don't even know why it's relevant to show elevations. Because we're-
Versus rendering, I guess, if someone had, some people don't have them, though.
We're presenting like we did in the 80s, right? And we left the rendering for last because we put all our heart and soul in it. And so we, but at the end of the day, these convey a lot more. Just a thought.
Right. I mean, I'm sure local won't appreciate if we start eliminating all the designs.
I know, but what-
All right, do you have any other comments or motion?
I'll move approval. Downing.
Second, Fluker.
I have a motion and a second. This is for final approval. Michael, can you call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is Downtown Flats Design Review, 200 Cleveland Memorial Drive. This is the Amtrak exterior signage seeking final approval.
10-3-0-3, long with all integrity, smoking trace, no- Hey, good morning, Ed Kim.
Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as usual answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do.
I suspect you're somewhere, so you can present quickly and just get to the signage on this one.
Thank you. Thank you all to the City Planning Commission for allowing me to speak today. My name is Ed Kim. I'm the Facility Development Manager for the Central Territory for our national network. I manage the Facilities Maintenance and Repair Program and Capital Development for territories spanning from Ohio on the east end, Colorado to the west end, and Arkansas to the south and everything up north. So here, the city of Cleveland, our Cleveland station, we are actually proposing a modest signage improvement project at our station along the Shoreway. And I'll just quickly go through the whole doc here for you. What we are proposing are six signs altogether. Next slide, please. First off is a monument sign. It's a vertical monument sign that will be placed at the foot of the parking lot entrance. This monument sign will be internally lit and tied into existing power that we pay the electricity for. Next slide. This is just images of the current existing conditions of where the monument sign will go. Next slide, please. We do plan on installing a post-and-panel sign for vehicular traffic to direct them off to the right, and it'll be right-handed directional driving from the entrance. Next slide. This here is proposed location A of our pylon sign at the northeast corner of the parking lot. There is an alternate location. Next slide, please. Which will be adjacent to our portico chair and then also in front of the building. The logistics of running electricity is much easier and feasible if we place it adjacent to the building there. This is an option that we have had our designers include. We have not yet exercised this option, but it is in the plan. Next slide, please. We do intend to place a customized letter sign, station identification sign on top of the portico chair, which would provide greater illumination and location identification, especially pedestrians coming from the 93rd. Next slide. Conversely, we're also having a platform identification sign placed on the top of the platform portico chair. And this is primarily intended for passengers onboard our trains, which I can loudly say that we are restoring daily service to the Capitol Limited between Chicago, Cleveland, and DC at the end of this month. So this is a very nice. And then, finally, we are going to place our pedestrian-friendly station identifier along the brick facade of the building adjacent to the main entrance. And that's all we propose.
Madam Chair, I think you're muted.
You're muted.
I apologize. Guys, just said, any questions or comments?
Madam Chair to staff, I assume this all meets zoning?
Thank you, Mr. Fluker. I'm gonna turn this over to Joe to share any comments that he may have. If Joe is on.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I had a technical issue at that very moment. Thanks, Director. Yeah, we just wanted to let the commission know that the planning staff would be interested in coordinating on some wayfinding to get to the site, because right now, the proper way to get there, if you're going eastbound on the Shoreway, is to exit at the muni lot and backtrack west on South Marginal Road. And Mr. Kim knows that we're trying to do something to this effect, too. So just wanted to bring that up, that that really sharp exit, and we could coordinate on making it more findable.
It became very hard to hear, but to capture Joe's comments, essentially, if you could show the overhead site plan, Mr. Kim, just to see where all the signage is. There was a particular staff comment about that the preferred city route to exit is the eastbound route to Amtrak. Maurice, if you could point that out, if possible.
Well, the preferred city route to exit for Amtrak is further east of that overhead bay, but the immediate exit along the circle at the east end of our lot, that is, I suppose there was a DOT sign on that overhead frame just before that exit, which was removed, that pointed down towards that exit for the Amtrak station. But basically, what we are tasked to do, one is to improve the signage and the branding and wayfinding within our parcel, but then also to work in collaboration with the City Streets Department and also ODA to improve the trailblazers that are there, which we do provide to any municipality or agency for free with the caveat that the departments install them themselves. So, but that is a subsequent layer to this project, but that will come with the coordination with the appropriate stakeholders.
Thank you, and noted. Mr. Kim, if you could also address Mr. Fluker's question about the zoning. Does the signage as presented fit the zoning requirements, particularly the one that is up in the air?
At this time, there are no known issues with zoning. However, at the same time, Amtrak is a federal entity, and by 49 CFR- Site this here. Forty-nine CFR, chapter twenty-four, nine oh two subsection J. We are technically exempt from municipal code.
Okay, okay.
Technically, but we don't like to exercise, yeah, we don't like to exercise that though, but to my knowledge, our research, and we have not actually seen any infringement upon the current zoning requirement there.
And that was just confirmed by Shannon from our staff, so thank you.
Oh, then you're not asking for permission, but we appreciate it. I am moved to approve the set signage plan with the caveat that Amtrak works with staff to provide better wayfinding to direct folks to the station.
Second, McCray Scott. Motion and a second, any further discussion, I'll just say that I think more signage here is needed, so I thank you for the improvements, actually. Can we call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Motion carries. I think we have a couple more, Downtown Flats Design Review, the Pine renovation, it's a three-story building at one seven two oh and one seven three six Columbus Road. Melissa, are you here to speak to this and anyone else, if I can swear you in?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as usual answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay. Take it away.
This is James Simmons with Real Life Real Estate Group, I also am going to be contributing to this presentation.
Go ahead.
Great, so just giving a general introduction, we're looking at redeveloping what's around thirty thousand square feet over three buildings into a four-story, forty-five unit mixed-use building with commercial space on the ground floor and apartments on the second, third, and fourth floor. Repurposing what was a site where they would assemble caskets and some other industrial uses over the past. Inside, taking advantage of the masonry and number of spots and heavy timber to redo the inside into some really great apartments. We're really excited about this project, our ability to retain a lot of the characteristics of the building and add to it and add to a lot of the great redevelopment happening around this area of the flats. With that, I'll pass it over to Melissa.
Thanks, James. The first couple of slides are just some photos of the surrounding area, I don't know how much time I'm going to spend on these, but this is the view of the back, the north side of the site, across the street is the river, and looking up Columbus Road. This is towards the back of the building, some views from across some of these various streets. These bottom two photos are of our existing building from the street view. And then the first photo on this sheet is also of the front of our building, and the last two are photos of the rear of the building. This is an existing site plan showing the building and the current parking in the front of the building. Go ahead to the next slide. Our proposed site plan, we have been asked to remove the parking at the front of the building, we are proposing some parallel parking spaces in the rear of the building that will fit on the site in our property line. We have not yet shown any proposed streetscape, so we are working through that and what will be required, what we need to provide there. We do, just to address it here, we do only have five parking spaces, because that is, as you can see, always can fit on our space, on our property, so we will be looking for a variance for that. The owner is working on getting an agreement with an adjacent site for parking. Next slide. The next few sheets are just demolition plans showing the scope of the demolition, planning on removing the masonry infill and all of the masonry window openings. Go ahead and look through the next couple of them. Demolition elevations, again, showing that masonry infill being removed. You can see those existing chimneys, those will remain, the masonry will be repaired and re-pointed. Go ahead to the next slide, so this is our proposed elevation, the bottom elevation being the street-facing elevation, you can see on the left and the right of the building, the existing masonry building remaining, all of those openings being filled in with new windows, and then the portion in the center, which we call the garage, used to be a garage, looking structure, being restructured, new cementitious lap siding on that area, and then the rest of the building is proposed to be a cementitious panel system for all the new-
Madam Chair, if I can interrupt for a second, Joe, just inform me that when they presented this at Design Review, there was a little problem with these slides, and maybe we could skip right to the renderings, would that be a problem?
No, that'd be great.
Absolutely, go ahead. There you go.
Much easier to read.
Yes, absolutely, so, yeah, as you can see, existing masonry building on the right, the one-story masonry building on the far left, and then everything else is going to be new materials, like I said, cementitious lap siding, cementitious panel system. Got canopy at the front entrance, we have storefront in that center portion, we are currently not meeting the glazing requirement for this urban overlay, because it does require seventy-five percent glazing on the first floor for non-residential uses. Our current percentage is at fifty-nine percent, but we are hesitant to modify the existing openings in the masonry, so we're trying to maximize in the central portion as much as we can, but we are going to have to ask for a variance for that, because we don't want to mess with that short fabric of the masonry building. There's a couple more rendering, yeah, they're all of this front piece, but just some various things if you want to focus.
Okay, thank you, Commission members, any questions, comments, this is for conceptual approval, is that correct?
I also wanted to note, there are existing photos over in the corner of the rendering.
Madam Chair to staff, I guess I'm trying to understand why zoning would impact this existing building as it relates to glazing, it is an existing building, so somebody could open on that, so I could understand why. I guess there's no reason, okay.
I'll draw, Joe is having some technical difficulties, hold on a second.
I, I, not the ultimate answer on this, but just to explain, there is an upcoming map change here that's going to add an urban form. Certain glazing requirements. That's where-
We can't hear you.
At all?
Barely.
It was a change where we changed this and added the urban form overlay, which has the seventy-five percent glazing requirement on the ground floor, and it does not take into account an existing building, which would be a good reason for granting a variance in this case.
Yeah, has that already overlay passed to this district, is this district already?
Yes, I believe it was already mapped just recently.
Okay. Well, I agree with August, it's unfortunate, I will say, this is a super handsome project, and I think the nuances of it in terms of the middle portion and the additions and, you know, it has a kind of, I think the kind of project we want to see, so hopefully that helps with your variances.
One quick update, Madam Chair and Mr. Fluker, is that Joe is telling me that it has not actually been, it's not in effect yet, it's been passed, but it's not effective yet, so because they're here now, it will not take effect.
Okay, well then, I think to the applicant, it's to your benefit to move this project forward before it's passed, just so you don't have to go through the variance process, I mean, it's a nice project, you're going to have our motion, I also would say that if you go back to their, you know, I certainly am comfortable with the fact that this could go back to staff and doesn't really need to come back to us, but I'll leave it to Commission members.
I just, one other color relative to the overlay, I don't, again, I'm just trying to figure out how you avoid, because the overlay, in my opinion, is the exception, then you ask for an exception for that exception, which doesn't process in my meager brain, but anyhow, I'm going to move to approve a project with the caveat that the applicant worked with staff to work out the details and not be required to come back to our commission.
And I'll second that, Downing.
So the motion and a second, any other comment? Okay, can you call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Paul.
I think she had to leave, so just to clarify, you will still have to go back to local design review, but then staff can sign off of it, and unless there are any issues, it doesn't have to come back to this commission. So thank you, so fabulous project.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, I think we have two more, if you could put it up, Maurice, I believe it's the Jacobs Pavilion. Maurice? Does anyone know? Yeah, can you go to the next item, Jacobs Pavilion?
Yes ma'am, sorry.
There was a glitch in the world for a second.
Multitasking here.
Exactly, two thousand Sycamore Street, this is the Jacobs Pavilion renovation, it's seeking final approval, Jesse is here from LDA, anyone else from the project team? I need to swear you all in, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as usual answer to the penalty of perjury?
You.
Okay, just you?
Just me today.
Yep, good, welcome.
Thank you. Okay. So this is the Jacobs Pavilion at Nautica, so this next upcoming season, AEG will be operating out of the venue instead of Live Nation, and AEG just wants to kind of rebrand the site a little bit. This slide here shows some of the inspiration, looking at like a port of call, they want to kind of pull in a little bit of shipping container materiality throughout the site, we're using mostly metal siding and some wood accent panels throughout the renovation. If you want to go to the site plan. Which is next slide. So there's several buildings on the site, so as we go through, we'll kind of go one building at a time, but starting with the box office area at the top right, there's an old trailer that they used to use as a box office, that was kind of a pinch point at the main entry to the right, that is getting removed, and the box office is moving to the adjacent building over there. We're removing some temporary tent structures, where you see like the tent merch and gateway area and providing a permanent structure there, the temporary merch building that you see on that site is like a roll-away actual shipping container they're reusing, and now we kind of moved around here and there, depending on the event and the needs of each individual event. And there's five different concession buildings scattered throughout this site, those will all be reclad in new materials. The bleachers, the three main bleachers areas, they will be touched up with a slightly new paint color, and I just want to point this out, because I'm sure this will come up, there's going to be a temporary trailer-style ADA restrooms that will be installed for the first year, this kind of came up in the last meeting, so after the first year, the client's going to install permanent ADA restrooms on the site, they just kind of want to make sure they get the right location, the right flow, and with the trailer, and kind of move it around a little bit and see what makes the most sense. There are three restroom trailers in the back that will get repainted, they're already metal siding, and some of the small buildings, the dressing rooms, production trailers, those will all get reclad in new metal siding. And then we also have a new ramp going up to the stage replacing a stair, this ramp will serve mostly for getting equipment up and off, up to the stage easier, as well as ADA access for talent that gets onto the stage. So if we want to go to the next slide, and we'll start with the box office. Top left is the material we're actually using, is a pack clad exterior wall panels, stained wood siding as accent pieces, top right is an existing photo of what the box office kind of looks like now, and what you see in the floor plan, basically, to the left of the floor plan, the U shape used to be all concessions, who are basically cutting that in half and using the top half as the box office, with new ticket windows, including a new accessible ticket window, and the rest will remain concessions, and the bathrooms and cooler remain as is, and there are some 2D elevations of just the new cladding and signage, if you want to go to the renderings, next slide. So here's kind of what you'll see is the main entrance, we had new halo-lit signage on the building, as well as all the new buildings will, or all the buildings will receive a linear downlight along the whole perimeter to help light up the boxes, so that we can kind of be visible from across the river during even non-event times, and you can kind of see some of the wood access at the ticket windows, and then the recess where the bathrooms are. All the extra wood, I think there's a lot of metal plating that will all get painted to match the metal siding as well, next slide. And this is the other view of the box office here, you see the teal color as an accent piece, we're painting the interior of the spaces with an accent color and some of the doorways, so you'll see the accent color through the windows, just to provide a little bit of color through all the different buildings. Next slide. This is the gateway area, so this is where the security checkpoint is for the site, you can see to the image to the top right, they had all these temporary tent structures there, so we're going to provide something more permanent, and what we're looking at doing is playing off the jackknife kind of bridge concept that is kind of anchors both points of the West Bank, so this is kind of a structure that resembles the shape and style of the jackknife bridge, and it kind of raises up in motion to create three separate structures. Between the structures will be a removable fabric awning, just to help shed some water away from the security area, so that equipment doesn't get wet, and it all goes to the right side here. And there will be LED downlighting strips attached to the bottom of each structure that provide lighting under there as well. If anybody's any questions as I go through each of these sections, happy to answer them. These are some examples of the concession stands, they're all basically built the same, will be designed the same way, we're removing the gray kind of canopy awnings over top the concession windows and replacing with a new awning system, as well as those, you can kind of see the Bud Light, light boxes, all the light boxes are being removed from the site, and they will be replaced with a kind of more elegant signs that are not, you know, internally lit boxes. Here's a rendering of what the concessions look like, so you can see the wood accent panels, the new canopies, which will have, which the wood accent will continue to the underside of those, then the top will be a metal seam siding that matches the same color as the aluminum siding on the sides, and you can see the accent color kind of popping through when the overhead rolling doors are pulled up. You can see the continuous sliding going across the top of the concession stands as well. Going to the next slide. This is specifically for the bleachers, so you can see, we're not changing the color dramatically, but we think the new aquarium Sherman Williams color will kind of match the aesthetics and the theme that the new, the new Lisi's going for for the venue, so they're going to repaint all the, you can see all the blue, repaint the new color. Under the bleachers, we're going to do all-new lighting underneath the bleachers, it'll be a combination of RGB and white LED lighting. The bathrooms will be repainted and get an accent color, this is kind of a sketchy view, just showing, you know, a different color of RGB that they could use to highlight a theme to on a particular show. If you want to go to the next slide and show the bathrooms a little bit more up close, then the bathrooms will be painted with, it'll be accent color at the entryways, they'll be painted white with black halo-lit signage to indicate men's and women's restrooms, the stairs will be new, currently there's their wood stairs, and we'll be providing new metal stairs with co-compliant handrails and access to the doors. I'm going to go to the next slide, these are examples- Um, these are examples of what the dressing rooms look like now, uh, under snow cover. And you can see that we'll be re-cladding these in the metal siding as well. We're also adding additional windows, uh, to these that face the river and the East Bank of the flats. And they get, again, they get the same treatment as the rest of the buildings with the continuous LED downlights, um, some halo lit signs to indicate which trailer is which. And I think the final one is the ramp. Um, so the ramp, uh, the bottom portion will be constructed of concrete. We will provide a skirting that is the same metal panel as the rest of the buildings to conceal the wood framing underneath. And we'll do a metal handrail and guardrail leading up to the stage. And that is the last element of the renovation. Uh, I do have, uh, some renderings without the sketchy filter. I know there was a comment in the last meeting, so I do have those if we want to look at those if the board felt, um, they need to see something a little different to get the, the idea across.
Uh, questions or comments from Commission members?
Madam Chair, I did have a question. Are there any handicap accessible bathrooms?
Yes, a temporary trailer that will provide accessible bathrooms. As you can see, all the current existing bathrooms are all like three feet off the ground because they are mobile trailers that were parked there and made permanent. So the client is providing a temporary trailer that will be ADA compliant. And then next year, their goal is, once they kind of finalize the position that they want to put it in, they'll provide a permanent ADA restroom, restrooms, multiple stalls.
How long is their commitment?
I think it's, I think it's ten plus years. I'd have to double check that, but it's a long, I think it might be, my, I think it is fifteen, but it's at least ten years. So they'll be here for a while.
Thank you. I move approval. Downing.
Second, Fluker.
Uh, motion on a second. Um, so, uh, any other comments or questions? It's nice to see some upgrades and some, uh, changes, so, um, and I hope this summer it's well utilized.
Uh, they got a full slate. They got a busy couple of months coming up here in, uh, May and June, so.
Good. Um, can you call the roll? Michael?
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Uh, I think our final item is a special presentation. Um, this is part of the Euclid corridor, but this is Asia Town Bus Shelter seeking final approval. Uh, three eight three four Payne Avenue. I think Karis is here to present from Midtown. Um, is there anyone else with you, Karis?
Yeah, Mandy from the GCRT, I is on as well.
Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury? That's for both of you?
I do.
Yep, okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I think Tara, did you want to, uh, kick us off?
Sure. Um, hi, this is Tara Peters, the, uh, Public Art Coordinator, City Planning. Um, this project, the public artwork on RTA Shelter did go to Euclid Corridor Design Review yesterday and was approved unanimously. Um, I want to express my support for the project as it reimagines, uh, an Asian-American artist's, uh, work that was removed from Asia Town to accommodate, uh, new, new traffic, um, new traffic plans in the area and is now being reimagined for the bus shelter. The only comment from Euclid Corridor, uh, was a concern with air bubbles. But, um, I'm going to let you guys go ahead and see the presentation from Karis and then we can get into that if there's any questions, but I believe she will be addressing it. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Tara. Hi, everyone. Um, as Tara mentioned, I, I will run through this quickly. I believe you've seen this artwork before. First, I just wanted to know, we believe that this project aligns with, uh, the Neighborhood Vision Plan that, um, this commission adopted at the end of last year. Um, this map kind of shows the proposed artwork in context with other artwork in the neighborhood, both existing and planned. You can go to the next slide, please. So this was the, um, the utility back box artwork and you can actually see, um, the third one with the coils. That's the artwork that has been reimagined for this project. Next slide. The location of this bus shelter is at Asian Evergreen Apartments, which is a senior apartment complex with about, um, sixty older adults, um, uh, of Asian descent that primarily speak Cantonese, Mandarin and Korean and have expressed, um, excitement about this project. So these are just a couple, um, context photos of the bus shelter. Um, if you want to just kind of roll through the next few. Yep, this is the existing bus shelter. And the, uh, plans for the bus shelter. This is an example that the RTA has, has done in, in different areas. This bus shelter is in Lakewood, using the transparent heat applied vinyl wrap. And I believe the next slide shows the, um, this is a local artist, Mitzi Lai, um, an example of previous artwork. And then the, this next slide shows her, uh, the proposed base artwork, which was on the utility box, and she's kind of adapted it to this bus shelter. So this next slide is the rendering on the bus shelter. And I do want to note the artist was very mindful of safety considerations, particularly because this is located outside of, uh, senior apartment complex. And so she wanted to incorporate enough clear areas, so it's very clear from both sides if somebody is in the bus shelter and, um, with also retaining visibility, um, both inside and towards the outside and from the outside. With that, I'll see, um, Mandy, did you want to add any comments from the RTA's perspective?
Sure. We're very pleased to be working with Midtown and Asia Town on this project. And we did have an RTA team review the project and we think it's going to provide some good visibility in, in and out of the shelter as well as a really wonderful amenity for our riders and also contributing to the streetscape.
Commission members, any questions or comments?
Uh, I think this is awesome. Every bus shelter should reflect some, some sort of art and represent the community or neighborhoods. So let's go for it.
And-
Is that a motion?
Yes, I move to approve this wonderful piece of work.
I agree with August and I'll second it.
Motion on the second. Uh, can we call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Um, motion carries. Uh, meeting is adjourned, um, but I'll ask, uh, the director, um, if she has any closing comments or any thoughts after her first, is it a week or two? Two weeks? Is that a week?
Week three, week three. Thank you to the commission. Um, just a, a word to you and the public. Uh, I am working currently to make sure that the planning commission meetings are efficient and that each case is purposeful. Um, and so I am in the midst of experimenting and redesigning how, uh, we both internally work with the agenda and making sure that we review things properly beforehand as well as ensuring that, uh, the committee and the commission is aware of any, um, uh, the agenda flow. I intend to move this public forum more towards a, a place where we can discuss planning issues overall. I heard that as comments from the commission prior to my post and, uh, look forward to, uh, introducing more topics of discussion, um, planning, planning elements or updates specifically regarding the citywide plan update as well as, uh, other major projects, um, that are coming down the pipeline. Um, so with that, I'm looking forward to continuing to partner with you to the commission and then also, um, presenting more to the public.
That's all.
Um, I think August might have his hand up. Do you?
Yeah, I'm, uh, Madam Chair to staff, as I was trying to think, in Joyce's vein, how we approve what we do, I was wondering if we could, would consider adding a couple of things to the docket under each item. That, that would be the ward and the council person, um, the service area and the CDC, um, associated with that service area. I think that would be incredibly helpful for people who watch this and for, I believe, the commission members.
Sure. We'll take note of that. Uh, we'll have Michael Bozak add that to his, uh, his list of things to do when he releases the agenda. Thanks.
Okay. I think also we don't have to decide today, but, um, just would love to hear in the next few weeks what the administration or how you might feel about if and when we get back to in-person meetings and that we think about that, um, over this next, uh, few months.
Sure. Uh, we will, we will discuss with the staff and, uh, let you know what the schedule looks like.
Okay.
Can I add something to that, Madam Chair?
Hmm, yes.
And, and can we invest in some, um, two thousand twenty-two technology to make your jobs easier as you present this, um, um, you know, in person? And I don't think it'll cost a lot of money.
Just here.
Are you speaking about hybrid technology so that there can be both in-person and virtual?
Yes, and, and the manner in which we make the presentations. I, there's, there's wireless keyboards and all types of wonderful stuff that don't cost that much that would improve your delivery.
Yeah. I do think, Joyce, your point too about, um, although something has been lost because we're not in person as a commission and we can't have the dialogue we used to have. It's been harder on Zoom. On the flip side of that, I think more people have been able to watch these meetings on YouTube and participate in a variety of ways. And it's made the meetings more accessible publicly. So, um, so I guess that my question is if we are going to be back in person eventually, if there is some way that they still can be streamed, uh, for the public, just to think about that.
Yes, and it is our intention to continue the streaming service. So I think what that means is that we'll be working on hybrid technology for the conference room where we usually meet. And, uh, in fact, I think there's discussions about how we can sort of redesign that area so that accommodates technology and people better, so.
And I think August, that's what you were talking about, was room five fourteen? Yeah, like, I, I totally get it. You're preaching to the choir here.
There's one item I would like to bring up that greatly disturbed me today in that first case concerning the, of the party center. And, and it occurred to me that as a community, we need to do better at educating folks. I think there's a, there's a pathway to start educating the CDC so they can educate their business community. Um, so we can avoid things like this because quite frankly, they allowed this to get out of hand. Um, and, and, you know, there's, there's some co-pability on both sides. And I just, I, I'm not going to unpack the social moment here, but, um, I just think it, a lot of that could have been avoided. Thank you.
Okay.
August, I think on behalf of the administration, uh, certainly we're working to clarify our processes. And, uh, the city deserves more. The city deserves more because, uh, we are, we want to be committed to transparency and fairness and equity. And so what that means is that we need to be much more upfront and open about what the steps are in order to, uh, get a use permit, whether you're a landlord or a tenant. Um, and so we're actually under sort of a internal review of the permitting process as well as how to communicate things much more clearly, um, to an audience, whether that's through the website or through videos. Um, but I certainly agree that there's quite a few structural and operational things that need to be addressed um, so that we can be the best city that we can be because we, we do want to support landlords and we do want to support tenants and we want to support small business owners. And as you mentioned, you know, there were just so many different layers of information, misunderstanding, all wrapped up into one quite complex situation, so.
That's a good point, Joyce. I think that's when it gets personal because there's no framework to rely on. So you attack one's character and that's really what was happening there, unfortunately.
Yeah, I, and I do think that the length of time, uh, the twists and turns and, uh, various operational things, uh, it, it all contributed. And so, uh, again, as Shannon presented in, in the beginning, I think our job really as the staff and the administration is to ensure that the process is fair, uh, whether it's during the commission meetings themselves, that there's due process, but also before and after. So I think that's definitely something that we'll take in and continue to work on, um, because of our commitment to fairness and equity, so.
Yep. Okay. Thank you all and, um, we'll see you in two weeks.